This is our regularly scheduled meeting for December fourteenth, two thousand and twenty. Ms. McGrew, will you call the role, please?
Yes, sir. Mayor Bill Hastings.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Chris Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Janet Court.
Here.
Councilmember Rory A. Robertson.
Here.
And Councilmember Dusty Teal.
Here.
You have a forum.
Thank you, ma'am. At this time, we will move on to item number two on the agenda. Our invitation tonight will be offered by Reverend Heather Tolleson, and she is with First Christian Church of Katy. Ms. Tolleson, we appreciate you being here, and you can begin at any time.
Let us pray. God, we thank you for the gifts of this community and the ways in which they express themselves and fulfill the life of Katy, the community which we have come to know and love. May you continue to call us, may you continue to lead us, that we may truly be your leaders in this community, that each and every one of you and all of our community may be served, may be heard, may be fulfilled. Continue to give us open ears to hear not just your wisdom, but the guidance of those around us. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you so much, Reverend Tolleson.
Thank you, guys.
And tonight, we will have Captain Brian Wojtek with the Katy Police Department, and then he will lead us in the pledge to the US flag, followed by the pledge to the Texas flag.
Please rise for the pledge to the American flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now for the Texas pledge. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Captain Wojtek. And before we get started anymore, I'd like to wish Councilman Rory Robertson a very happy birthday.
Thank you very much.
And I wanted to get that out there before Chris Harris beat me to it. So we will now move on.
Well, I guess I gotta tag that off my council member report.
Oh, you can do it again. We'll move on to item number three, which is public comments. And under this item, I would like to remind the audience that you have three minutes to speak, and you may speak on any item that is not on the agenda, and the city council will not respond to you. If you wish to participate via teleconference, if you would press star nine to raise your hand, Ms. McGrew will let you in to speak.
Here, we already have Phil Marsberry on the line with us right now.
Okay.
Good afternoon, and it is a real pleasure to see all these happy faces. It's the first time, gosh, in ten months. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council.
We always want to hear from you.
Well, thank you. This afternoon is primarily an announcement and an invitation. Since I've been unable to get to all of you, in fact, all of you, this is an invitation to our Reefs Across America Fourth Annual Saturday, this coming Saturday, actually, the nineteenth, at ten o'clock in the morning at Magnolia Cemetery. It has been a real challenge this year. However, we are going to lay reefs at four hundred seventy-five glorious and dedicated souls at Magnolia. If you would all be so kind to attend. And, Mr. Mayor, I have seen fit to remember your heated words. You do not have a speaking part. So if you and your dear wife and any other family members would be so kind to attend, I will not embarrass you or have you called out for anything other than he is here. For the balance, please attend, bring as many family members as you wish. The entire ceremony should not extend for more than forty-five minutes to an hour. We will have four tents around the ceremony with the reefs, so it won't be just one conglomeration of stuff. And I've already called Chief Noe's office. They will be delivered tomorrow between twelve and four. Beyond that, I am finished, and I won't bother you further. Thank you again for seeing your happy faces, and especially Becky. That smile will win forever. God bless all, and Merry Christmas to all.
Phil, I'm not supposed to respond, but I have to tell you that I did email you and tell you that when I told you about always asking me to speak, that I was joking. So you do know that.
Well, you don't have to leave Katy on this trip. So Mike, Mike made his point also. Oh, and I haven't seen Mike around, so if anybody sees him, grab him by the shirttail, and he's more than welcome to attend. I didn't want to knock his door and scare the heck out of his wife, because I haven't seen her this year, so.
All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Marsberry, and I will assure you, as many of us that can attend, we will be. So thank you very much.
Thank you again.
Is there anybody else that wishes to speak?
Mayor, I see no chats or additional raised hands at this time.
Okay. We will move on to item number four, comments from the public on any item that is on the agenda. Anyone wishing to participate via teleconference, please press star nine to raise your hand, and Ms. McGrew will let you in.
Seeing none at this time.
All right. We will move on to item number five, Keep Katy Beautiful Board Recognition for Two Thousand and Twenty Adopter Reef Pistons. And I believe we have a presentation by Keep Katy Beautiful.
Hi, everybody. Let me just pull up my presentation real quick. Oh, you're not supposed to be playing. Okay, what's happening? Sorry, one second. It automatically started going. Let's try this again. Nope. Okay, so I'm gonna talk fast then. I'm Jess Washburn. I'm the Keep Katy Beautiful affiliate coordinator, and I really wish this was not playing right now. I'm so sorry. Technical difficulties. Okay, let's try this one more time. If not, I'll just zoom in right here. So, two thousand and twenty, we continued to do our Adopter Reef program, and I want to give a huge shout out to our chairman, Carrie Singletary. She leads this subcommittee. We have a subcommittee for all of our Christmas decorations, and she's done a wonderful job. Two years ago, we only had twenty-two reefs, and this year we have thirty-seven. So we continue to grow this program, which is really exciting. It's actually kind of our dream to have every single reef that we put out decorated by a local business or organization, and so I just wanted to show you all the beautiful reefs that we got this year. So let me try, you know, third times a charm. Okay, okay. So we have Amazing Grace Hospice and AMG Bank, Friends of the Library, and Field Data Service. Ms. Peggy is holding our Fessil Senior Center Reef in Zelma Hutzel Elementary, did one. We have the Katy Area Chamber, as well as Katy Elementary. Katy Christian Ministries. Katy City Hall. Our Fire Department does a reef, as well as the Katy First United Methodist Church. Katy Flowers and Katy Hardware. Katy High School, as well as Katy Junior High. Our Municipal Court Department and our Katy Police Department does a reef. They're amazing. Katy Public Works, I love the theme of theirs. And of course, Keep Katy Beautiful does a reef of our own as well. Katy First Baptist Church. Katy Antiques, Matt Schaumberg State Farm. MKT Distillery, Multiplicity. Pat Deucet with Edward Jones, Old Town Katy Floral. Perser Architectural, Saxy Nails. Schmidt Funeral Home. The Cottage Door, Serene Beans. The Hub, This Is Living. Vintage Backroads, Wells Fargo. And last but not least, we have Wes Blackman with Edward Jones. I just wanted to show a few little additions we did this year. We have our wooden decorations that are at, you know, key points throughout downtown, and the photo from the top photo is the VFW Park, and then the bottom, of course, is the iconic Tiger statue on fourteen sixty-three and ninety. I also want to give a big shout out to one of our board members, Cynthia Madison. She created the ornaments that you see around town that have the Keep Katy Beautiful logo on them. They're amazing. She did these all in her own time and surprised everyone with all of the different designs, and it was a really great addition. So thank you so much for letting me show you the beautiful reefs, and we really want to give the biggest thank you to our thirty-seven organizations and businesses that decided to continue this wonderful tradition. And as I said, it's our dream to continue growing this program.
All right. Thank you, Jess.
Thank y'all.
And thank everybody who participated in that. They were all wonderful. We will move on to item number six. This is nomination confirmation. Mayor Pro Tem is authorized by the Home Rule Chapter or Charter, Article Three, Section Two. My nomination will, I will once again ask for your confirmation. Chris Harris is Mayor Pro Tem. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
I'll make a second.
Motion in a second. Is there any discussion?
I'd like to say something.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to say that Councilman Harris has done a wonderful job over the past year and a half as Mayor Pro Tem. He's represented Mayor Hastings and the city brilliantly. I'm confident that he will continue doing a great job, and I am proud to support my friend for Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Councilman Rory.
Thank you.
And I would like to reiterate that, you know, this job, there are so many different events to attend and so many meetings, and I can't be at all of them. And I don't believe that I have ever asked Chris a single time if he could attend something that he has agreed to and represented the city wonderfully. But in the future, with more and more meetings we have, I would also like to be able to ask some of you councilmen to maybe help him fill in when we get overloaded. But I'll shut up. Is there any further discussion? Having none?
Please. I don't think he has a problem making all the meetings.
Go ahead and call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Thank you. Welcome back, Chris.
Thank you all.
Moving on to item number seven, September Fiscal Year Monthly Report and Fourth Quarter Investment Report for the year of two thousand and twenty through nine thirty of two thousand and twenty. This is the information on the. Item number eight, the Consent Agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Mr. Mayor, move to approve the entire consent agenda as presented.
I second that.
Second by Janet Court. Is there any discussion? Well, there is no discussion on that. Call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to item number nine. Consider a resolution authorizing the mayor to accept an access and utility easement at Shox of Wood Creek. This is important in county. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Hang on a minute.
Okay, you have a, if you want to go ahead and finish this item, Mayor, we can go back to nine A and B.
Okay.
We can go back. We can go back. Just keep on.
All right. We have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? No discussion. We'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Back to item number A. Consider a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign a change order number two in the amount of sixty-one thousand, seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars and ten cents for various waterline and storm sewer item adjustments to the water drainage and paving reconstruction improvement project for Patton Drive, Lexor Lane, Corral Lane. These were within the Raislin Parish subdivision. Total revised contract amount with change order number two is three million, seven hundred and sixty-three thousand, seven hundred and forty-three dollars and ten cents. Original bid was awarded on July the twenty-seventh of two thousand and twenty, resolution number ten ninety. Change order number one approved seven twenty-seven of two thousand and twenty. Resolution number ten ninety-two. Source of funds is Water Sewer Enterprise Funds. The twenty-five thousand, four hundred and sixty-one dollar and ten cents. And fund number twenty-three for thirty-six thousand, three hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Harris, correct and full court. Is there any discussion?
Mayor, real quick for Byron. Now, this change order, we're under the original budget now, even with this change order. Is that correct?
No, that's why we're coming to ask for more reserve money coming out of the enterprise fund. So whenever you go into a project like this, you need to expect to have issues when you're dealing with an older subdivision. So if you notice, we're taking money out of the water and sewer account to cover up the change order that we have. Now, that's not to say we could have savings at the end, where we would be under budget, but right now, we've got to move the project as if all of it's going to come in where it said it was going to be, and then we need to come in and cover this portion of it.
And now, but we're able to use enterprise funds for the project because it's a water line, not because it's a flood control project. Where is that?
Right.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All in, universally aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number nine, the Consider a Resolution Authorizing the Mayor to Stand Easy Use the Board Contracts Number Five Twenty-Dash-Sixteen, Area C-LMC. Excuse me, for Fire Department Mold Remediation, Building Repairs, and Authorizing Use of Fund Number Oh Four Capital Improvement Plan in an amount up to six hundred thousand dollars. Proposal amount is five hundred and sixty-one thousand, thirty-seven dollars. Project manager is thirty-three thousand, three hundred and eighty-two dollars, for a total estimated cost of five hundred and ninety-four thousand, four hundred and nineteen dollars. This is through the Guardian Group for Fire Station Number One, Phase One. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion in a second. Is there any discussion?
Go ahead, Rory.
Thank you. Yeah, I think that anyone knows me knows without a doubt my support for our first responders, and I feel that the sentiment carries across the entire council. We do need to get them home. And this is an important vote tonight to accomplish that goal. Not only do we need to get them home, we need these firefighters and EMTs to be safe at their station. We need a firehouse that allows them to rest, train, and work to their fullest potential. That's why I completely support this first step. But I do have one question, and I think Mr. Aver can answer it for us. The mold issue turned out to be a recurring problem in the past. Not this time, but it was in the past. How are we ensuring that we completely solve this issue? And what are the guarantees or any type of warranties that we get from the company?
So Rory, yeah, let me address that. So what we will have is a third-party mold company come in and test once construction's finished to make sure that all mold is gone. And from that, from that, we'll be able to get assurances that at least we've taken care of the issues at hand. Now, I've got the contractors hopefully coming in so they can talk to you about warranties. So if I could get Jacob to let... Bear with us. We got tech. Okay, I've got Elaine coming in. Elaine, you there?
Thank you. Can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, J.D. Haynes and Jim Sprague should be able to come in. If y'all will please let them enter into.
They're working on promoting them now.
Okay.
Let's see, James is on. Is it possible JD could be under another name?
J.D. Haynes is what I know. Guardian Group. The email address, what I sent you is what he would be under. And I gave you a phone number.
I see Jason Hayne on caller's listing then. H A.
That's where we want to get in. There he is.
Eric, I see him.
Yes, I'm in.
Hey, Elaine, can you walk us through that next step?
Yes. Okay, so we have J.D. Haynes from the Guardian Group here that represents them, and then Jim Sprague is with LMC Construction. They will actually be overseer, the contractor, doing the work. And I am going to let J.D. and Jim explain the warranty part of this project.
Go ahead, Jim, if you're on mute.
Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, the base warranty is one-year materials and labor. The coating for the roof is one-year materials, ten years, or it's one-year materials and labor, and then additional ten years for the materials. If you want to go to a ten-year bumper-to-bumper, it's, I want to say it's eight hundred and sixty-something dollars to go bumper-to-bumper on that for ten years. At the end of ten years, if you want to extend the warranty out for another ten, it's the warranty fee, plus I think another light coat of material has to be put on, which, from what I understand, is about a dollar a square foot. So that would be like sixty-five hundred dollars plus the warranty cost to take it out in additional ten years after the initial ten-year warranty period. The TPO roof, the existing TPO roof, we can't warranty anything on that because we did not install it. However, the new TPO material that will be going on the parapet wall and the sheet metal cap, that will be, that material is warranted for twenty years. The sheet metal siding that is going to be installed on the building that has a lifetime warranty, and the gutters are ten years.
Okay, James, so what we're basically looking at is we've got a one-year warranty on right now material and labor. And then I know we had looked at that extension of that warranty for ten years for eight hundred, I forgot what you quoted me, eight hundred and something dollars. How much was that?
Yeah, it's eight hundred and something.
Right. So we were going to, we were going to take that option to increase the life for ten years. So for eight hundred and something dollars, we'll take that.
Okay.
Now, that's eight hundred dollars for the entire ten years. It's not eight hundred per year?
No, that's eight hundred for the whole ten.
Well, that's a good deal.
Yeah, that's a no-brainer.
We'll take it. So, so yes, that, I mean, that's kind of where we really wanted to focus here. We've taken a lot of time, had a lot of engineers, structural engineers walk the building, make sure that we're getting what we need to get to keep the firefighters in a safe environment and for a prolonged period of time, and not have to come back in three years or five years. So Rory, you're correct, council. It is just a phase one. We've got other phases that we're looking at, and as those come, we'll be bringing them to council. So when it's all done, we'll have a fire station that is up to code, up to what the standards are, and in a place where they can, we can get them back. But they're in a good location now. They're able to function. And while they're not there, let's take this opportunity to really fix it up right.
And so.
Bye, Jane.
Based on, I don't know if this is a Byron question or who it's for, but based on what you know now and all the problems you've seen, once you get started, what do you, when do you think, what's the duration of the project?
What Jim and them had stated was four-month duration for the first phase. Now, as things get added, it may extend it out, but four months was the duration.
Okay, so Elaine, you said four months for the first phase. Are you, is there already a second phase in planning, or is?
As we, yeah, as we discussed, you know, we don't have the HBAC. We had a company come out that did an assessment on the HBAC. We also had a company come out and do an assessment on the steel columns on the Bay Area. And those two items, that item, and then the post-mediation will come up. And then also Chief Parker had brought to our attention some other items that the proposal was given to us that he wanted us to look at. So we're going to look at those items also. So probably in January, we'll be bringing another proposal to you.
And do you think the items in this second phase will extend the duration or will it be, will these be things that can be done at the same time as the first phase?
Really, on that, it's going to depend on what, when we get the reports back, what the extent of work's going to be, and then also LMC on the proposed areas of what Chief Parker has given us. I think at that time in January, we'll be able to tell you if this can kind of roll in and be within the four months or if it's going to extend it.
Okay. I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Jan.
Um, I just want to make sure I'm reading something correctly. This is on the report, Elaine, that where you had all the detailed scope of work and talking about the windows at the birthing spaces. And I know it's very detailed and you listed every, every step that needed to be done. But in those birthing space, birthing spaces, rooms three oh two, three oh three, three oh five, you know what I'm talking about? Elaine?
Yes.
Okay. So you're talking about removing existing windows at birthing spaces where a window passes a wall, and then a few more steps down, you're talking about installing new windows. So are, are we closing up some windows and then cutting openings for new windows, like relocating the windows? Or are we just replacing existing windows?
They're going to be relocating some of the windows to meet the codes. Also, that's why we're doing it. The flashing and stuff is not correct. And then we found out for means of egress, it was a fire something, the person or the fire, fireman that's in there would need to be able to escape if they needed, they couldn't get through, it's not sprinkled, and they couldn't go through the exit way through a hallway. They would have to be able to exit the window. And the window has, per code has to meet a certain height and depth dimension. So they're going to be actually making sure that is taken care of.
Okay.
To the LMC.
I think that's all I have.
Is there any other, any other discussion? If not, we'll go ahead and...
Ms. Mayor, I was just going to ask, have we picked a project manager yet? Do we know who that is or...
Yes, the project manager, I think, is going to be JD Haynes, who's with Guardian. They're not with LMC. Is that correct, JD?
That is correct.
And the project manager will be working for the city, basically, correct?
Correct. Yes, sir. And I'm located in Katy, so I'm local. I won't be too far.
Any more questions, Dusty?
No, that's it.
Elaine, is our new project engineer also going to be kind of overseeing some of this as well?
Um, he may be brought in on some of the detail on the columns and stuff, if it's structural, but mainly we'll be working with JD and LMC.
Okay.
And our inspectors.
Is there any other discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same time. Motion carries. All right, I skipped to nine C immediately, so we'll go to nine D. Consider a resolution authorizing mayor to sign the Third Amendment to master development agreements among Katy Development Authorities, City of Katy, Texas, and the Katy Boardwalk Hotel LLC. As predecessor in interest to the KBH, L L C, this is the Katy Boardwalk Hotel Conference Center and Parking Facility. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Harris, second by Janet. Is there any discussion on this?
I just want to clarify that this is, what this is really doing is just because of COVID, we had some delays, and so we are not really changing scope, we're just extending the completion date?
You're just extending the length of, you're extending the length of the agreement for one year.
Okay.
The December of next year. And Christina Miller, if Jacob, Christina Miller, she might be out there, she's attorney for ABHR, there she is. So if you have a, I mean, Christina can kind of give you a quick, you know, rundown of what the agreement is. It's coming through Katy Development Authority and the three parties that are at hand. So Christina, I'm going to go ahead and let you just kind of talk real briefly on the agreement in just a time extension.
Okay, so the amendment only changes two things. It changes the outside closing date to December thirty-first of next year, and those are the dates by which KDA would have to sell their bonds and the developer would have to secure their financing. And then it also extends to the middle of next summer, the interim feasibility date. And so basically, that is a, the date in which we have to touch base and say, yes, we have the ability to finance this, and they have to come to KDA and we'll come to you and say, yes, we have the ability to secure our financing. Everything else in the agreement stays the same, including the scope of the facilities they have to put on the ground, the number of rooms, the finishes, the quality, we have not modified any of that.
Is there any other discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same time. Item number ninety, consider a resolution authorizing mayor to sign an interlocal agreement with Cooperative Purchasing Service, the Purchasing Cooperative of America, known as PCA, to provide the city with additional cooperative purchasing, purchasing options. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Janet, second by Dusty Field. Is there any discussion?
Just a quick question, this is the same type of agreement as what we have with Byboard?
Yes, yes, it is.
Okay.
Just gives us another option.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same time. Motion carries. Item number ten F, consider a resolution authorizing mayor to sign an affiliation agreement with Wharton County Junior College for their EMT program to perform clinical rotations with the City of Katy Fire Department.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Harris, second by Court. All in favor, say aye.
No, excuse me.
Wait a minute, is there any...
Can we have a discussion on this? Is there anybody from the Fire Department going to give us a presentation or go over this? Because we haven't discussed this, and I have, I have lots of questions because I don't really understand exactly how this is going to work.
Yes, ma'am, we've had a lot of these before, interlocal agreements with them. But Kenny Park, are you on?
It's been promoted, Chief Parker, and then we're promoting Dana as well. Either of you can unmute.
I'm on, if he hasn't, can you hear me?
We can hear you, Dana.
Okay.
Okay, so are y'all, are y'all, I mean, are y'all prepared to discuss this to your presentation, and you just want me to start hitting you with questions?
I'll take questions. I don't have a presentation. I've submitted probably three or four of these.
Okay, okay. So I, this is the first time I've been involved in one of these, which is why I have a lot of questions, so...
We had one of these with Blinn Junior College, I think.
Did we? When did we do that one?
Last year.
Last year.
Sorry. I've slept since then, and lots happened since then. So one of the things that caught my eye is that they're going to be able to utilize the facilities of the City of Katy Fire Department. Well, since we're down a station, that kind of concerned me, what facilities are they going to use? And how often are they going to be there? Or is this just whenever they need to do an on-hands type thing?
So basically, right now, this agreement is being put in place because our paramedics that are attending paramedic school are not being allowed to do clinicals at other departments because of COVID. So students that we have that are in different colleges are being allowed to do their clinical rotations at the place of their employment.
I'm having trouble hearing you.
Park, I think you may jump in.
Was brought forward with Wharton County.
I'll go ahead and jump in since her connection's really bad. Basically, the short story is with COVID, a lot of our paramedics that currently are working for the City of Katy, they're in paramedic school, they have nowhere to finish their school. So that's why we have an agreement with Blinn so that our actual members on their, when they're on their student time, can come and ride with us to get their time knocked out so that they can actually become certified paramedics. There's just not a lot of organizations right now that are letting students come in and do their schooling, basically their hands-on contact with actually riding the ambulance.
Okay, so the agreement we had with Blinn was for our own firefighters to do their schoolwork, basically, at our facilities, correct? Did I understand that correctly?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So is this the same thing? Is this for our own firefighters? Are we going to have people from outside our fire department coming in, using our facilities and training? That's kind of where I have questions as far as liabilities and that type of thing if they're not already a city employee.
So my understanding is that it is possible if somebody is enrolled in Wharton County that they can come ride with us. But as far as liabilities for the city, whenever they enter into the program, I believe they have their own releases that they sign, you know, basically not holding the city liable if something were to happen while they were doing student time.
And they have, and they have the, they have the coverage from also, from the entity also.
From the, from the college?
Yes, yes, because they're participating in that, in that program. And both the college and the, and the, and the city has immunity for some, for some of that also.
Okay. So another question I had, it has here that the colleges will be under the direct supervision and responsibility of faculty of the college. So does a faculty member come with these students? Or when they're, when they're at our facility, are our firefighters, are y'all responsible for their supervision only? Or is there like a Wharton County person with them?
So the way that it only works is if, for instance, if we have an issue with the student that comes in, they have somebody directly available that we can call and contact them. And then if they need to come out and see, or sometimes they may just say, send them home if we're having an issue with the actual student. I think that's supervision. I think some of that wording is when they're actually doing, in the hospital, sometimes they'll send a facilitator into the actual hospitals with them to oversee them, but it's mostly the in-charge medic that's on the ambulance that day will be the one supervising them. And if any issues come up, we'll just contact their clinical coordinator.
So not necessarily onsite, but...
Available.
With a phone call away?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so Art, you don't see that we have any liabilities or opening ourselves up to any kind of liabilities with something like this?
No, no more, no more than we would with them having to do that. Our liability arises when, if they, if they were to have a wreck with somebody, we're going to have that whether they were at work or not, and we got some limited immunity on that, and we're going to be the ones driving the vehicle most of the time anyway. So it's no more liability than we would in them training if we were doing it ourselves.
Okay. And so if there is a student EMT, I mean, I don't know how much y'all let these people do, but if they were to do something wrong and cause somebody to pass away, are we liable for that?
We have, we have some limited liability. It all depends on what happened, what caused them. You know, as you know, the only way we have liability is if there was motor-driven equipment or there was some use of property that caused injury to them. So if we had, if we were letting EMT, which those EMTs are our employees, anyway, most of them are, if they were out there speeding, or not even speeding, but ran a red light and hit somebody, we were going to have some liability, but it's going to be them to liability like with any of our employees that'll be doing that.
Okay. I guess, and like I said earlier, my concern was, I got the impression that we, this would be a group of people coming that were not necessarily city employees, but it may be a combination.
Yeah, it's designed, it's designed for our, our city employees to be trained without us having to develop a training program for them. So we, we contract with them for them to provide the training for our employees so that our employees can get certified.
So these, okay, again, these students are going to be only our employees and not just employees, just not the students of the college that they're sending to.
No, there may be some, some of them are, they'll be in the class, and some of them, they'll make a class, and it'll be, it'll be the Katy, the Katy people, and it may be some more in there. So whatever they're going to take to make a class. And then when they're, then when they're in the class, what we, what we kind of hope is that those other people that are in the class that are kind of designed to go somewhere else, that we can still come over here with us because they worked at our place, they've been at our place, they know our chain of command, they know our people. We're hoping as soon as they get certified, they'd even know they're supposed to go to Rosenberg, that they hire on with us.
Okay, okay. I'm good. My biggest concern was, was if we were opening ourselves up to any type of liability.
No, we have some liability, but the limited, limited liability, but, but it's what the liability, it's necessary for us to get our people trained, and by having other people in the class, it's no additional liability.
Okay. Okay, I'm done. Thank you.
All right, is there any other discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same time. Motion carries. Item number nine G, consider a resolution authorizing mayor to sign an agreement with Neil Technical Services Corporation for electrical and pump maintenance services. This is requested through Public Works. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion is second. Motion is by Chris Harris, second Janet Court. Is there any discussion? No discussion, we'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same time. Motion carries. Number nine H. Consider a resolution authorizing mayor to sign a customer service agreement with Unit First or Uniform Services, and this is in relationship to Public Works. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Harris, second by Court. Is there any discussion? Having none, we'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same time. Motion carries. Nine I, consider a resolution authorizing mayor to sign an minimum agreement with Safefield to amend fees and conduct an assessment of permit and inspection department. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Court, not in here, the second.
Second.
Rory Robertson. Any discussion?
I'll say something. This is, I know this one will be a very positive, it does pass. I'm pleased that this is on the agenda and we do get to vote on it. Permitting can be a challenge for both the business and individuals in the past. It has never been a people problem, but more of a numbers problem in the Katy and the growing community. This vote will help solve that concern. We will now have inspectors able to handle multiple types of permits at one stop. This improves the timeliness of inspections and should clear any backlogs. I had a conversation with a builder last night who will be completing a project very soon. I asked for him to report back to me as often as possible. This goes to any of our residents and construction companies. Please reach out to council and let us know if you're seeing improvements in the permitting process or offer suggestions. We just want to make sure that this is a big improvement. I know this has been a concern for many years, so this is a huge step in the right direction.
We just want to make sure that this is a big improvement. I know this has been a concern for many years, so this is a huge step in the right direction.
Any further discussion?
Well, I'll just kind of echo a bit of what Rory said. I think this is a great step into figuring out what is going on with our inspection process and our permits. I mean, I'm excited that that we're doing something like this so we can, like Rory said, fix this problem once and for all, hopefully. And I'm looking forward to hearing what their recommendations are after they do their assessments. And thank you, Elaine, for working so hard on this. I do appreciate your you and your your team's efforts.
Anyone else?
Mayor, just want to thank Elaine and Public Works and staff for being open. I I know it's difficult to ask for criticism and feedback, so I I know that's a tough part of the process, but I I don't want to say it's a negative or that there's always a problem. There's a lot of positives that comes from the permitting department. There's a there's a lot of great feedback that we get. We don't always hear about it, or other people don't always hear about it. We always hear about the negative, but great staff, everybody has room for improvement, and certainly glad Public Works and permitting is open to that. So I thank you for that.
Thank you, and we're looking forward to the assessment also, because we want things to improve and move forward. So thank y'all. I hope this is approved and we can move forward with this.
Oh, real quick, Elaine, when are you expecting some information back from the assessment? When?
They will start and once the agreement is signed, approved and signed, they will be starting in January, probably the first or second week of January.
Okay, and do you know about how long?
They said four weeks.
Four weeks, okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Having no more discussion, we'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same side. Motion carries. Item number nine J, consider a resolution or President Mayor to sign a service order with ClearGov incorporated software proposal. And this is digital book, digital budget book and onboarding. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
I'm sorry, I think I talked on top of Rory. We can let him have the motion.
Leave Becky to figure that one out. Is there any discussion?
Yes, me. Um, and I guess most of my questions are for Andy and Seon, or I guess Byron, you can answer them. Um, so when we were going through the budget process, Andy was talking about he was building a new system, or he had some new software that he was loading up. I can't remember what he called it. So are are we, is this ClearGov, is that going to? Is it, I guess, number one, is it the same thing that he was talking about during budgeting? Is it a new software? Is it going to work with what he has? Are we replacing what he's been working on the last couple of months?
So when we were first talking about this in the budget, we're, I mentioned that we are upgrading to a new a new software, not actually new software, a new version of the software that we have. And and then we also discussed creating a capital improvement plan. This system will help us become more efficient in both. It makes the turns the budget into a digital product. In the old days, we used to print books after books, just and hand them out, and the citizens never got a book. They'd have to look on to the website to see what the budget looks like, but once we do any amendments to the budget, the original budget is obsolete. This will be very close to a living document where the week they can look, come in, citizens and council, anybody could look at the budget. And it will be basically a live document where it will show any budget amendments that we've had. They don't have to thumb through through the book to figure out what they want to look at. They can, if they have an interest in the police department or even the finance department, they can drill down on the finance department and see where we spend our money and and go, it'll go deep down into the general ledger line items. And so that'll answer part of our transparency issues. So citizens can go and basically look at, you know, where are we doing, how are we doing month by month. Also, this this creates a this 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 system also has a tool that houses a module rather for the capital improvement plan. And this is what I'm really excited about because we were, when we were first talking about this, we were thinking about hosting it in Excel. And I've seen other cities do that. Excel is a good product, but it scares me when it's the controlling document. So with this system, you can have multiple people with their hands at it, and we're going to control it to just a couple. But our new city engineer Romero will be actually inputting the projects and describing them, giving all the detail. And where finance comes into this is making sure that we're reporting it. And then we will, the new ecosystem version, rather, that we have, we can be able to track the projects. We can call each each capital improvement project in in this this product, but also in in code, we'll have a project assigned to it where we can we can track the cost and how and how and and compare it to the schedule that Romero, our city engineer, might may put out there for. So I I think it's a marriage of these two products is going to be really good. People will be able to go to our website and look at the project status, and then they'll be able to look at our capital improvement plan. They can also look at the budget. And if they wanted to, they could print it. They can also ask us questions through the system. And I'm I'm actually pretty excited. I think it's going to make us a lot more efficient.
Yeah, it sounded pretty good. And then so you mentioned it was in code that you were working on earlier. So is in code going to have like the actual data, the actual numbers?
Yes, they will have the actual numbers, but also the the capital improvement module will also have actual numbers. Well, at we'll have we'll have projected numbers for 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 projects. They will have the actual numbers for the particular year we're we're in for the all the approved funding for each project and and the projection for the for the projects that we have in years two through five going out. Does that make sense?
Yeah, but I'm not getting a clear understanding as to what's, so we're taught, we've got, we're going to have two systems, in code and ClearGov. So ClearGov is going to have capital improvements and the budget.
Yes.
Okay, so budget is projected our best estimates, right? And then in code is going to have the actuals? So if I wanted to
Yes.
Are the two going to, are the two systems going to talk? So if we wanted, if if somebody wanted a report and we wanted to see the budget, you know, a particular department's budget compared to how they stand year to date? Is that, is that?
The way it's going to work, in code is going to be live. We we will have, we'll be entering transactions daily. At the end of the month, we will be updating these transactions to ClearGov, and that will become visible to everybody at that point.
Okay.
Yeah, we would love for it to be live, but then, you know, there's always issues of of recording transactions at the end of the month. And that's when you really want to make your judgments on on how well we did in the month.
Okay, and that makes sense to upload the actuals at the end of the month, but at at some point, everything's going to reside in ClearGov. Correct?
Everything will be visible in ClearGov, yes.
Okay. But not necessarily reside there.
No, the control will be
In in code?
But the CIP for a module of ClearGov is where we have an inventory of all our projects that we can't put in 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 code because in code are actual numbers. And when we're talking about where where they're going to fit within our budget in years one through five, and maybe even further out, we can go out to 10 years. That those are just projections.
Okay.
And that's that that's where we'll house all the projects that we can think of.
Okay. So you kind of, you kind, one of my questions was, and I think you kind of indicated it, so this Clear ClearGov and in code working together, it's going to result in more reliable, consistent reporting, because I noticed whenever we get in these budget books and whatever, if you go back to the previous year, it's hard to tie numbers together. You really don't get a good picture of of what's what has transpired in a year. So
Right.
This is going to give us a more consistent recording tool?
It'll be consistent, yes.
Okay.
I think the big thing with this is it will be a lot more concise.
I'm sorry, Bill, what?
But I think one of the big things in this system, it will be more concise.
Oh.
It's a it's a tool to build our budget so we can actually have, it's a good placeholder placeholder for all our thoughts throughout the year. And we could be building the budget, the next year's budget as as we go through the current year.
Okay, so are you going to be starting from scratch or are they, because I noticed in some of the paperwork, it said that they can they can in import our current data. So are they going to be doing that? Are you going to be? Are you going to be controlling it and you're going to be building it?
Yeah, they're going to they're going to input it, but I'm going to review it for accuracy.
Okay.
That's the way it'll work from now on. We're almost starting from scratch. We do have a starting point that we're working where we don't have any information as a CIP. So that's that's where Romero and I will be working along with Byron and determining where, you know, where do we start? How far out to some of these projects have, and where it's really going to help finance and Byron is is making a decision on our bonding. What can we wrap up into a single bond that'll take care of all these projects that we have out there?
Okay. Okay, I think that's I think that's all I have. Thank you, Andy. I appreciate it.
Any other discussion?
I think one one quick comment, real quick. I think it's a win for transparency. I think it's a great, great software for the people to view and know what's going on with the finances.
I think you're really going to like it.
Will you be giving us a demo?
Will I be giving you a demo?
At some point, not tonight, not tonight.
No, not tonight, not tonight. We still have to learn this product. And so I think once once we get our feet a little wet, I think we'll be able, and especially when we get into the stages of of talking about the budget, and I think we can start a little bit earlier this year, I think you'll see what this product can actually do for us.
Yeah, I I think one thing I'd like to see, hopefully, this will be able to to show us is because we did our budget based on what we knew at that time, and and we know that things are changing and improving and whatever. So hopefully, this will be a place where we can go and look at something without having to butt Byron or you all the time.
Yes, you could. You could also, it's going to start budget too. So we have a good template for the budget, and I think you your comments, welcome, in helping us develop. I think everybody's going to be really happy.
Looking forward to seeing it. Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? I will go ahead and call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Motion carries. Number 10, consider an ordinance adopting Amendment Number Two to the 2020-2021 budget, providing changes and carryover appropriation of funds from the 2019-2020 budget. Ms. McGruff, can you read the caption, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance of the City of Katy, Texas, adopting Amendment Number Two to the original budget of the City of Katy, Texas for the 2020-2021 fiscal year, providing for changes in the general government fund budget and also providing supplemental appropriations, changing the 2020-2021 budget for a carryover and additional appropriation requests and providing for severability.
Thank you, Becky. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Court, second by Harris. Is there any discussion? Having none, we'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same side. Motion carries. Councilmember's reports. Let's see, I'm going to go left or right on my screen. Councilman Field.
I have no reports or comments.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Robertson.
Yeah, I was very excited to participate with the rest of council. Many of us were out there several times with the Katy Fire Department Santa tours. The fire department does a great job with them, and I'd like to thank Laura Wiley for all the scheduling. But mainly, I was in awe of the people of our city. Part of the tour is to collect donated toys and canned goods. You all showed up big. During the past year, many of our families have struggled. Many have struggled still today, and this is helping so many families. I'd also like to thank everyone who showed up for the City of Katy cruise through that we all participated in. It was so much fun, and I hope that we can move away from COVID, but still keep this program in conjunction with our future tree lighting. Great job to those who organized the cruise through. We saw a lot of smiling faces that night.
All right, thank you, sir. Janet.
Well, Rory didn't leave me much. I just wanted to say exactly what he said. The the drive-through on the tree lighting was awesome, and city staff did a great job. And I kind of have to give not this council, but the police department and the fire department, everybody that was out there. We kind of didn't know what we were doing, and we just kind of all fell into a into a routine and just it just went really smoothly, and I've heard nothing but good things about it. And so just the city staff, I I'm going to say within the last year with with having to make changes for COVID and pulling together events and trying to come up with innovative ways to do all these various events. Y'all just have done awesome, every single one of you. I just want to thank you from the bottom of my heart. You've always got all of our residents at top of your priority list. And so I just want to thank everybody and just wish everybody a very Merry Christmas. And hopefully, we will all have a much better 2021. So thank you.
Thank you, Janet. Rich?
Yes, last week, Councilmember Robertson, Stockdick and myself attended Heritage Park West HOA meeting. We had a great time. This weekend, ADPD and Katy Fire Department are having a lift-athon at 9:00 a.m. at Bona Fitness, which is on Third Street. I don't know why they didn't ask council to participate, but they're going to be there, and I I think it's going to be a great time. So and don't forget about the Reeds Across America Magnolia Cemetery and at Antioch Cemetery. So we've got a lot going on this weekend to look forward to, and Merry Christmas, everybody, and happy birthday, Rory.
Thank you very much.
I still beat you.
You did.
All right. Uh, let's see, my report is going to be fairly short. I want to reiterate what a wonderful night it was with the cruise through, drive-through, whatever you want to call it, stopping wave. Lots and lots of smiling kids. The fire department gave out, I mean, police department gave out somewhere between oh, 450 and 550 animals. So that was lots of lots of smiling kids, lots of happy faces, and I want to thank everybody that had any part of that. If you were just, if you just showed up for it, thank you so much. And it will be hard to beat. It seemed to be a better turnout than we've ever had. Other than that, I had the pleasure of serving as Santa Claus for Casey M's Santa's sleigh this weekend. That was nice. I said Merry Christmas in my sleep that night a couple of times, I think. But it's a it's a great Christmas season that we all need to fully enjoy. But it's a, it's a great Christmas season that we all need to fully enjoy considering what we've gone through in the last 10 months. Well, yeah, 10 months now. So I wish everybody an extremely wonderfully blessed Christmas. And thank you all for what you've done through this year. This will be our last council meeting. But I want to just say thank you for your participation, your dedication and what you do to help keep this city running. It took a, a huge effort on every employee we had. And, you know, it was, it was very humbling just to see everybody pulled together and for us to be able to accomplish the things that we did accomplish. And not only the changes we made, but just the general outlook and atmosphere of the city. I think we've been very, very fortunate. And thank you all very much for everything you do for the city of Katy. So with that, I'll shut up and then we'll turn the meeting. Do I have a motion for a adjourned?
I'll make a motion.
Darren. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same side. And I'll make one more comment. I apologize again. Late in the day, my fingers do not work and invariably for the last five meetings, I have skipped a page. I apologize. And thank you for being patient.
Perfect.
I have a wonderful meeting. Meeting is adjourned at I-42.